All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the March Meeting of the Concord Zoning Board of Adjustment. We will, for the regular cases this evening, we will follow our usual procedure, which is to say, I will call the appellant and ask them to come forward, be sworn in, be seated, and to offer whatever testimony they would like us to have here. We do request that if at all possible, they confine it to 10 minutes. We will then ask the appellant to step down, and we will solicit testimony from anyone in the audience who is in favor of the appeal. And following that, we will testify or ask for testimony from anyone who is in opposition to the appeal. After that, we check in with code enforcement to see if there are any comments from their office, and then if any information has been brought forward that appears to bear factual clarification, the appellant will have the opportunity to offer that clarification, not new arguments, prior to our closing, the public testimony portion of the hearing. In most cases, the board will consider an act on each case prior to moving on to the next. We do have some items on the agenda tonight which are in the public meeting category as opposed to a hearing category, and those are going to be treated a little bit differently. We will not be taking public testimony on those. The first is case 3.1, North Point Engineering LLC, on behalf of Manchester Street Concord Auto LLC and Manchester Street Concord Auto, TIC LLC, requests approval for a one-year extension of the variance, ZBA 0056 2023, approval to allow a 10-foot-wide planted buffer in lieu of the required 6-foot-tall perimeter fence, a storage setback of 10 feet where 50 feet is required, and the expansion of the existing use into the Aqua for Protection District overlay at 150 Manchester Street in a highway commercial district and industrial district. This was ZBA case 0244 2025. Is there anyone from North Point here?
I don't think so.
All right. Since this is a request for rehearing, I guess the question in everybody's mind, is there any change from what was originally, or excuse me, not a request for, a request for extension?
No, there is no change. They just weren't able to accomplish it.
Very good. As I understand it, from the application, the permitting process, as well as adjustments they were making in the design, precluded they're getting started.
Yeah. And so, and what has happened is they also need, which...
There is a...
Should be here. Oh, okay. He is here. All right. I was gonna say, because they have a variance request later on in the adjustment or in the agenda, which is a public hearing, and they need that to move forward with their site plan.
Understood.
Planning board.
Understood.
Are the extension requests? I can't recall. Aren't they typically public, they're not public hearings?
They're not public hearings.
So we just go forward on what they wrote?
You can. I mean, he's here.
We could ask for testimony if we want.
You don't typically open it up for testimony on an extension request.
It's all, it's all stuff that was previously approved.
Mm-hmm. It's just, they're just requesting an extension, and they're kind of ahead of the game. They don't technically need one right now because it doesn't expire until July, but they've got the planning board application going forward in, on March 19th for determination of completeness, and by the time they get through that process, they will not have had time to construct. So they figured, since they were applying for the variance for the one that had expired, that they would just do the extension at the same time.
Gotcha.
All are good.
What I get a little caught up on in these is the, one of the criteria is, I think that it was circumstances beyond the applicant's control, which is seemingly a high standard. So I don't know how strictly we typically enforce that, but that is, you know, what the code says.
I don't know that we've ever made a fetish of it. In this case, they are, they, I don't know that we've ever made a fetish of that. In this case, they are, they did testify that the rest of the approval process is still underway, that it's taken them this long to get to where they are, which is not something that they would necessarily control.
There you go. Yeah, I just, the, I had to read the application three times, realized they didn't tell us what the circumstances beyond their control was, although it appears to be the next steps in the city regulatory process are underway and not complete.
That's how I...
That's my, I'm drawing that conclusion and actually say it.
Yeah. Any other discussion or comments from board members? I guess the five regular board members can...
Yeah, I apologize I was late. If someone else was queued up for this one, I don't, okay.
Anyone care to make a motion?
I will. I move to adopt the applicant's proposed findings as a board findings effect, grant the one-year extension request for CBA 0056 2023 to extend the approval to July 5th, 2026.
Would anyone care to second that?
I'll second it.
Very good. Any discussion?
I'm prepared to accept Mr. Carley's statement about being beyond their control, even though they didn't explicitly say that.
Very good. We'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? The extension is granted. We also have under item 3.2, another request for extension, different appellant. Granite Engineering LLC, on behalf of Bradcore Holdings LLC, requests approval for a one-year extension of the variance, ZBA 0029 2023, Z 0030 2023, 0031 2023, and 0032 2023, approvals to allow the construction of an 8,250 square foot addition, 88.5% end expansion of the outdoor storage area in support of the existing non-conforming sales, rental, and repair of construction equipment use, to allow outdoor storage 10 feet from a street where 50 feet is required, to allow outdoor storage without screening from view from adjacent streets and properties, and to allow a storage ratio of 2.25 to 1, where 1.3 to 1 is allowed at 391 Loudoun Road in the Gateway Performance District. This was previously approved in 19, or 2023. Is there anyone from Granite Engineering here? Please come forward. Swear, tell the truth, and nothing but... May we have your name, please?
Good evening, board. My name is Brett Cole from Granite Engineering. I was the applicant who presented to you two years ago. I see some familiar faces. Chapel Tractor, down at the intersection of Braco Day and Loudoun Road, received multiple variances from this board, most of them relating to non-conforming, pre-existing situations out there. There is longstanding practice out there with a tractor supply company. Chapel Tractor took it over five years ago. They have expanded. They're looking to do a facelift. We have submitted to the planning board. That was done in 2000, it was done within a year after getting our variances. It did come back that the city wanted Braco Day significantly upgraded. We've been working with the city engineer and the city planners to kind of understand how much of upgrade they need and what design goes into that upgrade. We do have plans in front of the city staff at this point. We are meeting with the planning board in a few weeks here. So we've made significant progress, but we just need another year to get construction going.
Very good. Any questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Yes.
Any comments from code enforcement?
Nope.
Any comments from the board?
If you look at the application, they've listed numerous reasons as to why they weren't able to proceed in a timely fashion.
Would you care to make a motion?
I would. So I move to adopt the applicant's proposed findings as a board findings effect and grant the one-year extension request for ZBA 0029-2023, 0030-2023, 0031-2023, and 0032-2023, thereby extending approval to March 1, 2026.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? The extension is granted. Motion passes. That brings us to number, item number 3.3. This is a request for a rehearing. Have all of you received and had a chance to read the memorandum from Attorney Cronin?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Given the allegations in the request, I'm going to recuse myself from sitting on this request.
All right. Ms. Perkins, would you like to join us on this one?
Okay.
Thank you. Have all of you had the opportunity to read and consider the memorandum from Attorney Cronin? Everybody?
Yes.
All right. As, as you know, I'll say for the benefit of the audience, we have to, in order to grant a rehearing, we have to find that we've made an error in law or in procedure, or that there is new information that is germane, that was not available at the time of the original hearing that's been brought up in the request for rehearing. Has anybody among the board members detected anything of that sort in the memorandum that was presented? Start with you, Nick.
I have not.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes, I did not sit on the case, but in reviewing the, the request for rehearing, I did not see any new information or errors of law that I'm positioned to win on.
Mr. Winters?
Yeah, as you all likely recall, I was in the minority on this vote, and I don't think I've changed my mind, but at the same time, I didn't see anything in the materials that I thought were new. If the members who were in the majority were inclined to possibly reconsider, I certainly wouldn't be opposed to rehearing it, but I didn't see anything in and of itself that I thought was clearly a change. I, I'd also want to say, because, because as we saw, there were some specific comments about our colleague, Ms. Specter Morgan's statement that, you know, she's usually, something along the lines of paraphrasing, she's usually a no on use, and they made quite a bit of that. Just in her defense, I didn't, I didn't take it that way. I just, you know, as we know, she's, she's very, she takes the standards very seriously, and the burden of proof is on the applicant who wants a used variance, and I think she takes that very seriously. I don't, and that's all I took out of that. I think if we looked at the history, I don't believe she's always a no on used variances or anything like that. So, you know, I didn't take that remark nearly as the way the applicant took it, and I didn't think it showed any, any type of bias on her part.
Ms. Perkins?
I'm kind of honestly agree with Andrew as far as if they want it, if you wanted to rehear it, but I didn't, from what I've read, I didn't read anything. I wasn't on the vote the first time, but I didn't read anything that we had not done properly.
I agree with my colleagues. I did not find anything in the, in the memorandum that would be, cause me to vote in favor of a rehearing.
So, and I too was in the minority with Andrew in, with the original request, but I still don't see any evidence to suggest that we've made a mistake.
Very good. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'd move to deny the request for a rehearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The request for a rehearing is denied. That brings us to section four of the agenda, public hearings. The first public hearing is actually a continued public hearing, and I believe we had closed public testimony on this case prior to continuing the public hearing, so I don't believe we will be taking any public testimony. This is Andrew J. Tyne on behalf of 1115 Pierce Street LLC, who requests an approval for special exception for a rooming house per section 2824 JB, table of principal uses residential at XMAP lot 7441Z51, which is addressed at 11 and 15 Pierce Street in the downtown residential RD district. We, the reason we had reassessed the case was that board members had requested some further information from the police department, I believe, for...
Police and fire.
Police and fire, yeah.
And you only receive information from fire.
Okay. We will not be taking testimony tonight, gentlemen. Did anyone have a chance to review the fire department?
I did.
Submission?
I did. And if you look at the original request, it said they had 13, had three fire calls in 2023, and 10 fire calls in 2024. I went back and looked at each one. I only counted 12. Six, I counted six involving EMTs, and six were basically false alarm calls.
Gas leak or...
Gas leaks and so, yeah.
Yeah. I also reviewed it. My, anyone else have any comments on the, on the data that was brought forth?
I reviewed it as well, and I agree that about half of them were, the alarm system was malfunctioning. And the other half, none of them seemed to be related to any sort of drug use or overdose or anything like that.
And the, we, did we not get some sort of information about police calls, or did we get nothing?
I, no. All we received was fire. I asked for police a couple of times, but didn't ever receive it.
Okay.
But didn't, I thought the applicant gave us, like, maybe it was just in summary form last month.
They gave us a count of eight and six, four, total of 14 police calls in a two-year, a two-year period.
Yeah, I think we were trying to find out, is it, did they diminish over time because they had made different business practices at the location?
Which they, what was their testimony, I believe?
Yeah.
Very good. Why don't we resume the discussion where we left off, which was whether or not to grant the special exception? Nick, did you want to add any more?
No.
Jim?
Yeah, I just want to remind myself by discussing it, the issues seem to be how we were counting the, is it, was it, because it was a duplex, are we, are we counting it as two buildings or two, two units or two homes or one, right?
Yeah, that was one of the issues.
It was one.
Yeah, that was the issue that, you know, I'm, as I'm, I'm reminding myself as I speak to it, and I think my, my view was that if they're oversimplifying it, but if there, if there's two kitchens, it's two homes, and it should be counted as two.
Yes, that was your, and the way I'm looking at that issue is, if I recall, if, if, if it only is allowed 10, in other words, if the opposite view prevailed, then they would be disqualified because one of the criteria is that they meet all of the regulations. If, so, I think it's a little ambiguous, so I, I mean...
I mean, the one versus two question?
Yeah, I could, I could kind of be, I might be able to be convinced. However, I, I'm, I'm thinking in my mind, just that it's not that big of a total size, and I think 20 people in a, how many square foot total it is, is just, in my mind, does overburden the municipal services, whether it tech, so I don't know if I have to fish, in my mind, officially get to the decision about whether it literally fails the, that prong.
Ms. Specter Morgan?
So am I understanding that the question is whether or not it even satisfies the definition of rooming house because it is attached dwelling units as opposed to a detached dwelling unit? Or whether it's two rooming houses?
That was part of the discussion, yeah.
Because I was in here last month, so...
Right, right. If it's only one, if it's only one rooming house, then by definition, they, they, they don't meet the criteria because, because a rooming house is only allowed 10 individuals per house, right? So, but if it's two, then we still have to look at all of the criteria, which primarily relates to the...
Is that correct?
Rooming house allows a maximum of 10.
Maximum of 10, okay.
And...
And they, and they want to have 16 people, I think?
Up to. And I think we had talked about having a condition of approval, that they could have no more than 10 for the entire property. Hadn't we talked about that several meetings ago?
I remember it being discussed. I don't, well, we never did draw any...
Right. It was, that was brought up, I don't know how seriously. So I'm just, I'm just looking at number five. Any requirements, and one of the criteria is that any requirements and standards for the use it set forth in the supplemental standards are fulfilled. So if, if only 10 people are allowed, if it's only considered one, then by definition, that's not fulfilled. If that is fulfilled, then I, then we still look at the other criteria.
Gotcha.
And...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
To your point, I do think we discussed that, and, and I don't, I can't remember what the applicant says, but I had wondered in my mind if that would, if that would be economically viable for them, you know?
We can take testimony if you want to, if you want to ask the applicant a question.
Let's not rush to that, what I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
You don't have to.
Yeah, I don't... Yeah, I, I think I have all the information I need.
Yeah. I'm just curious, again, so if we treat it as two separate homes, if the applicant, applicant came forward with two, two applications, one for with the street address A and B with 10 in each, it might be looked at differently, as opposed to the single structure, being treated as a single structure. It could, yeah. Not to prejudge, if that were to happen, I don't know if it would still have to consider what the impact on city services, neighborhood...
Yeah, which is one of the criteria.
Mm-hmm.
Another thing that was discussed at length was whether or not, who is using the building is germane, and I don't recall whether in the end there was a difference of opinion on that. My own thoughts were that it's not germane.
I agree with that.
I agree with that.
I certainly agree with that. The population, however, the, the impact of this particular use, you know, regardless of the who, you know, in my opinion, could be relevant, and going back to the original neighbor's testimony of, of, you know, the, the impact that the use was having.
But I don't think there's anything in the application or the ordinance that says that we're approving a sober living, so they weren't being asked to approve a rooming house, and so...
Right.
Right. That is correct, and that is why the inhabitants do not matter, correct.
And as of the last time we discussed this, my feeling about the two houses versus one was that the fact that there were two houses that happened to be attached to each other didn't, wasn't, didn't disqualify.
Right. I said, you didn't, you're saying then, that they're limited to 10 because it's one structure?
No. I, I see, I see it as two different units, even though they happen to be connected.
But they're not connected by a common doorway, they're just connected by a wall.
Yeah. I mean, if you were in a city where all the buildings were built next to each other, that's the way it would be. So, I...
If the board, if that is the board's inclination, then the motion language in there, say that twice and break it up, and to, and have it be one for 11 Pierce and one for 15 Pierce, that way it's clear that you're approving, or whatever your decision is, a rooming house at 11 Pierce and a rooming house at 15 Pierce, because they do have, each unit has a separate address.
But is that what the applicant has asked for?
Yeah.
Okay.
What if they knock a connection down the road, does that make it one then?
Well, they haven't, so I don't know. We're not really being asked to judge that at this point. At least, I'm not aware that they have. Any other discussion on this? Would anyone care to make a motion? Either in favor or in opposition, it doesn't have to be in favor, it could be either way.
Can I just talk a bit more? I just, I guess what's in front of me, because it looks like an application to treat it as one structure, but two units, so I'm a little reluctant to make a motion to prove something that's not in front of me. I see where you're heading, I'm just...
Yeah, I'm just trying to, if you're going to have it as two separate, I mean, you can't approve it as a rooming house, as one rooming house, if it's two, because each one is allowed 10. So, if you approve it as one, then...
Then they have 20, or 16, I think, is what they said, right?
Right.
Yes.
What are the addresses, 11...
So, you need to approve it as two rooming houses.
But I guess my point, I don't have an application in front of me that...
Yeah.
I don't have two applications in front of me, one for 11 Pierce and one for 15 Pierce.
I see what you're saying.
And isn't part of what they're asking for approval for to have 16, where only 10 are allowed?
Well, because, no.
Wouldn't that be a variance?
Because they're, they're claiming that they're each individual units.
Do you have a...
Doesn't read that way.
A copy of the agenda, the original agenda item?
It's exactly, it reads exactly the same.
Oh, all right.
Copy it and paste it.
Because...
But it's one town lot, so really they want, does it really require two applications, or is it just one special exception twice?
It does say that if the special exception is requested for a rooming house in each of the developed duplex units.
It's kind of like if you asked for a variance on a setback, for two different side yards, you wouldn't have to have two applications, so it's more like adding another special exception to the same application.
But that would be two variance requests.
Two variance requests, yeah.
It is, and for purposes of clarity, actually, I am, how it's been done in the past, in my opinion, has been incorrect. There's only been one application, and there's been 10 variances on one application. They each need to be their own case, with their own case number and their own application, and that is how I am moving forward.
For every single variance?
Yep.
That was a hard P.
She means business.
I'm not even going to go close to that.
So, if there's a side variance, a back variance, they would be two separate?
It's two separate requests.
Nick, what was it that you found?
No, I, the language, just confirming, the language is the same, yeah. It does say a rooming house, two addresses.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Just like it says right there.
So, it's a rooming house for 16 people?
A rooming house at two different addresses for 16 people.
But if it's a rooming house for 16 people, then it doesn't meet the definition of a rooming house, it needs a variance.
Or they need to rephrase it to say, to argue, what, what?
Well, I mean, they're basically arguing that because there, the structure has two homes in it, we, you know...
It's two rooming houses, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think we might be dancing on a pin with a few angels here. We have a building, it's big enough for, under the technical definition of rooming houses, if it were six inches apart for 20 people, they're asking for 16. I think we can reasonably undertake, just my personal opinion, we can reasonably undertake to decide whether or not they meet the criteria for a special exception. And if somebody wants to come back later and say we made a legal error, then they can do that, but I, I don't think it's a legal error, and I'm well-known for my deep knowledge of, of the law and procedure, not very much.
Well, I'm well-known for running my mouth, so I'll go ahead and make a motion. I will move to grant a special exception for a rooming house, one at 11 Pierce Street and one at 15 Pierce Street, each limited to eight occupants at each rooming house, on the basis that the applicant has met the special exception criteria as set forth in their application.
Is there a second?
A second to the point of conversation.
Okay, discussion.
Oh, you want me to justify that? Okay.
I want you to convince me, Laura.
I want you to, well, it's not my job to convince you, it's the applicant's job to convince you, but I'm convinced. So, I, I don't think it's going to create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. You know, if these were just duplexes and they had a father and a mother and six kids living there, that would be a completely appropriate use, and they would be entitled to have as many cars there as they wanted to. It's on public water and sewer, and so it will not overflow the system. They're not making any changes to the property, so it's not going to increase stormwater runoff onto adjacent properties. Based on what we've seen from fire, at least, there's been no excessive demand for municipal fire, and I'd imagine that if there had been an excessive demand for municipal police, we would have heard about it, having asked two or three times. Each unit will have less than 10 individuals per home, and therefore, the supplemental standards are met. This is not a non-conforming use or structure, so item six doesn't apply. The use is still a residential use, it's not going to create hazards to health, safety, or general welfare. The proposed location, it's in the middle of a residential neighborhood, this is a residential use, and it is consistent with the intent of the ordinance in the master plan, the use is allowed by special exception. So, a special exception use is a use that is permitted if the special exception criteria are met, and I believe they are met.
So, there, you know...
I appreciate the neighbors' objections, but those relate to the people who are using it, not the use itself.
Well, the other thing about the neighbors', I'm, I'm kind of coming around, because the other thing about those neighbors' objections is I don't, I don't have the exact years, but it seems like it's really subsided. Maybe she's going back to 22, I kind of lose track, but whatever her major, and I, and I don't doubt her credibility, I mean, it sounded very sincere, but whatever the issues were at that time, the applicants really spoke about trying to make it right, and the records we have do corroborate that. So, I'm kind of coming around to, you know, because that, that's really my biggest concern. As far as the issue about one versus two houses, I, if we're wrong about that, they're going to need a variance anyway, right? Because we're not, we're not the final decider really on that issue, we don't...
I guess at this point, they'd have to go...
Yeah.
They'd have to...
If, if the city ultimately disagrees with us, they could say, hey, you have your special exception, but it doesn't allow you to...
Yeah, that, I, that's an interesting question, because it wouldn't necessarily be considered, I don't think, an error law on our part, because we acted on what we were given. It would have to be an allegation that the city made an error, which would be done, I guess, to hire a lawyer and go into that conversation.
And to me, it's a kind of a close call, just from interpretation, that it's not exactly clear what they mean by quote, a, a house. So, I, I, I'm okay seeing it the way you guys do.
Any other discussion?
So, I'm trying to understand, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm getting hung up on it, it's not, it's too, so if this was a, somebody had a apartment building with 10 units in it, and they came in and said, you know, we're going to deem this a rooming house, and we're going to have 80 people living here.
I would not be okay with that.
No, that isn't what they're doing.
No, I'm just saying, the point is, it's, it should, my view is, it should have, if they wanted to be able to put, it should have been an application for 11 Pierce and one for 15 Pierce, so we could have looked at it as what it is.
I think you could certainly make a case for that, but it wouldn't stop me from...
But, but under that hypothetical, I mean, I think we would deny it, because that clearly would burden the municipal services.
How is that any different?
It's just, well, I guess it depends how...
No, you were, you were talking about the millions of people in it.
Yeah, if you have 80 people in a, I guess, I mean, I shouldn't judge it, but yeah.
Any other discussion? This has been a long and interesting discussion. All right, I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor, let's see, the motion was to approve the special exception for all of the reasons that Ms. Specter Morgan gave. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
The vote is four to one, with Mr. Monahan, the minority. The special exception is granted. And that brings us to the next case this evening. You're welcome. The next one is case 4.2, Thomas Simakowski requests approval for variances from section 28-41D, minimum yard requirements, one front yard, three side yard, and section 28-41H, table of dimensional regulations, to allow a 25-foot front yard where 50 feet is required, and to allow a 25-foot side yard where 40 feet is required, at tax map lot 183Z13, addressed at 67 River Road in the open space RO District. This is not a development of regional impact. Mr. Simakowski, ah, good evening, sir.
Hi.
You swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
I do.
Would you identify yourself with the record, please?
I'm Thomas Simakowski.
What would you like us to know?
Yeah, I had a, an original entryway that was in disrepair. I did take it down just because it was unsafe, and this time, I wanted to rebuild it slightly larger to an enclosed entryway. The original one had a roof and, and just a landon. I wanted to go out a couple more feet further than the original one, towards the neighbor's property line. I'm going to be 25 feet in a 40-foot setback. Right now, there's, all those homes were built in the 20s, there's not much space, as far as there's no closets or anything like that for storage or anything in the downstairs of this home. This would definitely help out with that. It would not impede any, any nuisance with any, any of the neighbors, there would be no negative impact. It would actually blend in better than what the original entryway looked like. And, and again, the footprint would just be slightly larger than what it was. Let's see. And all these homes were built on small lots back then, so it's really, I'm just trying to deal with what I have.
Is it possible to do anything without violating the setback on that side of the house?
There is not, no.
How much is it going to bump out from the side of the house?
Six feet.
And what was the original about?
The original, the original landon was greatly, maybe four to five feet.
So, you're adding really, what, just one more foot?
What, maybe two feet tops. I'm going to come out six feet, and then, and then just come down along the side of the house 10 feet, which I show in my drawings. I already, actually, I thought I just needed a building permit and found that I needed a variance, and I had repaved my driveway, and before I repaved my driveway, I had planted my Bigfoots already. But, yeah, so it's a, it's a, it's an entryway too that's existent, that was part of the home.
So, you're, did you, is the existing entryway already demolished, or you're...
Yes, it was, it was pretty dangerous. Whoever originally built it, they put the posts on some of the blocks, and there was some rotten wood. The picture probably shows, the picture of the home where I want to put it shows where the original roof line used to be for the entryway. You can see that in one of the photographs that I had taken, which should be in your file.
So, when was it demolished?
It's, it's been a couple of years now.
You did it?
Yes, I did.
Or it was why you did it, okay.
I did, yes, yeah.
The, I'm looking at your sketch, and it's, it appears that the drawing of the addition is not to scale. If, if, if it's 10 feet up and down the page, then it's, it's certainly not six feet left to right in the drawing. So, am I correct that when you are done, you will have 25 feet of width in the driveway? Even, if it's correct, if it is really six feet?
That, that is correct.
Okay.
There'll be 25 feet from the entryway to the property line.
So, this part of the drawing is not to scale?
It probably isn't accurate, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, but I would only be coming out six feet from the home.
Got it, and that leaves you 25 feet?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, I don't see, is garage right on the property line?
Yeah, yes, so there's my garage on the property line, and then my neighbor's garage is right there, next to my garage, Freeland Hubbard, and he has no, no problems with what I'm doing. We've been neighbors now for almost 30 years. Yeah, and, and again, this would just blend right in with the house, it would be vinyl sided with the house, which probably you wouldn't even know that there was anything added on to it, yeah.
And you also happen to be in the front setback with this, but so is the entire house, apparently.
This is the side setback?
And the front?
The, the front is a part of your application, too.
Oh.
I suspect you are in the front yard, I mean, the whole house is, that's why your addition is.
I'm, I'm not understanding, that would, I, I consider that the side of the house?
Yes.
It is, but the, the house itself is in the front yard setback as well as the side yard setback.
Okay.
So, anything that you extend on it, in that neighborhood of the house... So, anything that you extend on it in that neighborhood of the house is going to be in violation of both.
Okay.
So, I think the agenda item's correct.
Okay.
Because it's 50 feet, so it's a very long setback.
That's right, yeah, okay, I understand, yep.
I think you wind up with a space you could build on about the size of a ping pong table in the middle of the lot, if you were to strictly go by the rules. Other questions for Mr. Simakowski? Anything else you'd like us to know?
No, I think I'm good, unless, yeah.
I just have a...
Thank you.
Sure.
Safety issue, is there ice that flows off the house that the structure would prevent you having ice buildup in front of the entrance?
No, it would be an asphalt roof, and there would be, the steps would be the opposite direction of the pitch of the roof.
So, the answer's yes, actually.
Okay.
It would keep ice off your stairs.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, all right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Any comments from code enforcement? With that, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing. We have a request to replace a, two years ago removed entrance on the side of the house. We hear testimony that the configuration of the lot is such that no addition in this location can avoid setback variance. Mr. Warner, how does this look to you?
Looks good.
Okay. In other words, you would, I take that to mean that you would vote in favor of granting.
Seems that way.
Ah, okay. I'm slow, but when I get the point, boy, you can't get away with it. Mr. Monahan?
I just observed, this is the easiest River Road application.
If we don't get one a month, it's just not, it's just not ZBI. Mr. Winters, how does it look to you?
Yeah, I think it's reasonable to have an entrance way, and as has been going it out, there's, this would be the only, the only place to put in, and what he's proposing is very, very reasonable, so.
Ms. Specter-Morgan?
I agree.
Would anyone care to make a motion? I also agree. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Two.
I move to grant the variance from Section 28-4-1D, minimum yard requirements, to allow a side setback of 25 feet where 40 feet is required, and a front setback of 25 feet where 50 feet is required at Tax Map Lot 183Z13, addressed to 67 River Road, because all of the criteria are under RSA 674-33 have been met based upon the record before us, and I move to adopt the applicant's proposed findings as the board's findings of fact.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous, the variance is granted. You're all set.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next three cases, I think essentially constitute one hearing, the three cases, if I have this right. So, why don't we stack them all up and talk about them all at once? This is Richard D. Bartlett Associates on behalf of Helen B. Murray Revocable Trust, 1991, care of Grady R. Cruz and Ernest P. Sharp, co-trustees, request approval for variances from Section 28-7-7G2, setbacks from lot lines to allow off-street parking within five feet of any lot line where off-street parking is not otherwise allowed at Tax Map 32Z58-119 River Road, open space residential district. The same appellant is requesting to allow, setbacks from lot lines, to allow off-street parking within five feet of any lot line where off-street parking is not required at Tax Map Lot 32Z56-115 River Road, and the same appellant is requesting an eight-foot yard where a 40-foot yard is otherwise required at Tax Map 32Z56 at 115 River Road. Please come on up. Gentlemen, swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
I do.
Please identify yourselves for the record.
My name is Dan Mullen from Richard Bartlett and Associates, and I have with me Grady Cruz, who's a trustee of the Murray, both Murray trusts.
What would you like us to know?
So, we are requesting relief. What happened was is that the residential lot at 119 River Road has been in place for probably 80 years or so, or better, and the lot line had gone through the adjacent greenhouses. This is Murray Farms Greenhouse on River Road. So, they are trying to settle the estate, but they can't do that with the lot line running through the greenhouses. So, we have embarked on an endeavor to do a lot line adjustment, so that both lots will be on their own, and in the course of doing so, we had, we're going through a lot line adjustment process with the City of Concord, and we have come up with a few issues that we need relief on. The applicant had been here last year in June, and had gotten an eight-foot setback variance for the residential house, and a 15-foot setback in front of the greenhouses, which was essentially a side lot line. They had presented a sketch that depicted the proposed lot line as being approximately eight feet off the greenhouses on the southern side of them, but the, the way the variance was presented, it didn't include the eight-foot variance for 115, which is the greenhouses. So, that's part of what we're asking for, and part of the reason for that is, if we were to honor the 40-foot setback, it would leave the residential house with virtually no backyard, and it would encroach on the existing septic system that's behind there. The two pavement setback relief we're looking for involves a, there's a large swath of pavement that has been there for probably 70 years or so. It used to serve the, it was a hatchery building there at one time that burned down several years ago, and it also served as a partial semi-circular driveway for the residential house. And that pavement was entirely on the residential lot at the time, and it has been there ever since, and it's never been changed or altered. And the applicant wants to leave it there for a couple of reasons. One is because River Road is so narrow and winding, they have, need a place for trucks to pull off to give them supplies for the greenhouse, and it's difficult navigating in the rear part of that greenhouse lot. So, for them to safely get off River Road, they pull off on this paper, and they can be out of the way and unload their things and take off. And the secondary reason is they want to leave the semi-circular driveway there, because if the pavement is gone, the only option they have is to back straight out of the garage, and where that sits right now, the grade is such in front of the house that it's almost a blind driveway when you're driving north from River Hill Market area, you can't see a car coming out, especially if they're backing into River Road, which is already narrow. So, if that stays there, they're able to pull out headfirst, and they're further out up the road, and there's better visibility for them to come out, which is one of the reasons why they want to leave it there. So, the only people that would affect are the Murries themselves, and they would just like to have it remain in place, and in order to do that, we need relief for that reason.
And essentially, that question has to do with all three of these variances.
Yes.
Is the configuration exactly the same as the one that we, that the board granted variances on before?
Yes, we're trying to be the same as the sketch that was presented before.
Okay.
Yep.
Questions from the board? Anyone?
These are just variances we didn't realize we needed before?
Right.
Yep, okay.
But the map we saw before is the map we...
Yeah, that's what we're trying to, you know, figure, so.
So, this, all the construction, all the structures are remaining the same, it's just you're changing them all?
Nothing's being changed except for a lot line, that's it.
And so, is the idea you're going to market these to two different, you said that they're going to be, they're going to be, are they going to be sold as part of the estate, is that what you're saying?
He's just trying to settle the estate right now?
Settle the estate.
Yeah, because the greenhouses now are on the residential lot, so we have to shift the lot line to go around it, so the commercial and the residential can be separated.
For the near, for the near future, all we're trying to do is be able to convey the residence, and right now, there's absolutely no way to do that. And if this adjustments and the things we're proposing are allowed, then we've separated the farm from the residence, and it gives us the ability, and the way, not that it really matters, but it looks like a family member will buy the residence, and that way, we're now completely separated from the farm, it's been there for 103 years, and the greenhouse operation. So, that's really all we're trying to accomplish. And my mother-in-law and father-in-law have been gone for more than 10 years, and as trustee, I would really like to no longer be a trustee.
This cleans up your deed and your title.
Yeah.
I can see how you'd feel that way. Any other questions from the board? Anything else you'd like us to know?
I think we're good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Any comments from code enforcement? With that, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing. We have three variances, all of which have to do with the request to maintain the existing configuration of the property and the drive, the house and the driveway, but to revise the property lines in order to resolve conflicts between the structures that are there now and the property lines that are there now. I'm going to start with Ms. Specter-Morgan.
I have no issue with any of these variances. They are lines on a map, and nothing is being changed on the ground, so it's not going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood, it's not going to diminish surrounding property values, and there would be a hardship if we did not grant them.
And, Mr. Winters, how do you see it?
I agree.
Mr. Monahan?
I love when she sums it up.
I have nothing to add.
Ditto.
Mr. Ditto, yes. And I'll ditto that. I, if there was ever hardship, this is it.
Yeah.
Collection of properties and property lines and whatnot. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Do you want three separate motions?
Yes, I think we probably should, yeah.
I'll make the first one. I make a motion to grant the variance from Section 28-7-7G2, setbacks from lot lines to allow for no parking setback from a lot line for the existing paved driveway at 119 River Road, where five feet is required, because all of the criteria under RSA 674-33 have been met based on the record before us, and I move to adopt the applicant's proposed findings as the board's findings of fact.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries, the variance is granted. Now, let's move on to 4.6. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll do that. I make a motion to grant the variance from Section 28-7-7G2, setback from lot lines to allow for no parking setback from a lot line for the existing paved driveway at 115 River Road, where a five-foot is required, where five feet is required, because all the criteria under RSA 674-33 have been met based on the record before us, and I move to adopt the applicant's proposed findings as the board's findings of fact.
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay, so move, second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Now, there's a third, did I skip one here?
Yeah, the third one is the setback, eight-foot setback.
Okay, yeah, the eight-foot setback, that's item 4.5. Anyone care to make a motion for that one?
I'll make a motion to grant the variance from Section 28-4-1H, Table of Dimension Regulations, to allow a side yard setback of eight feet at 115 River Road, where 40 feet is required, because all the criteria under RSA 674-33 have been met based on the record before us, and I move to adopt the applicant's proposed findings as the board's findings of fact.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous, the variance is granted. All three variances are granted. They're free at last. You're welcome. All right, the next case is 4.6, North Point Engineering LLC, on behalf of Manchester Street Concord Auto LLC and Manchester Street Concord Auto TIC LLC, requests approval for a variance from Section 28-24J, Table of Principal Uses, J1, sale or rental of motor vehicles other than construction equipment, to allow the sale and display of motor vehicles where such sale and display is not otherwise allowed at Tax Map Lot 783Z16, addressed as 150 Manchester Street, in the industrial district and highway commercial district. This is a development of regional impact. Gentlemen...
Mr. Chairman, I just need to disclose that I represent the town of Pembroke. I don't believe I have a conflict. I spoke with my client this morning, they have no problem with me sitting on this application, but if anyone else does, I will recuse myself.
I know. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
I do.
Gentlemen, let us know what you'd like us to know.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Aaron Tebow. I am a project manager with North Point Engineering here in Concord. Here with me tonight is Dennis Wilson. He's the owner-operator of Capital City Subaru, and has been around since the original variance that we're looking to replace tonight. We're seeking a use variance from Section 28-4-1J, Table of Principal Uses, J1, and that is to permit sale or rental of motor vehicles other than construction equipment, where such use is prohibited in the industrial district. I'm going to pull up our site plan. Actually, this is...
Yeah, it should be in there.
It's great, because it shows right where the boundary is. And then...
Go to that, and then hit the arrow at the left.
Back.
Yep. And that'll take you to the agenda.
Perfect.
Ain't the internet great?
Go down. I think you're on the wrong, you're on, you have to scroll all the way down to the item. It's 4.6. Yep, keep going.
Oh, sorry.
And...
Technology.
There you go.
We're there, 4.6.
4.6.
Application materials.
There we are.
There you go.
That looks familiar.
Perfect. All right. The variance would allow the legal extension of the existing use. We have the existing dealership shown here, outlining it with the cursor. It's a 9,500-square-foot steel-framed building with access from Manchester Street through a 30-foot-wide paved driveway. Currently, the site ends right about here, the paved parking ends right about here, with a stormwater basin that sits right here. This plan shows the overall development plan, which would be both the expansion of the dealership as well as expansion of the inventory, storage, and parking area. The subject parcel used to be two lots of record. When I talk about the Integra Drive parcel, it's bisected right here. This would be the Integra Drive, and this would be the Manchester Street parcel. This is the zoning boundary. On the left side here is the industrial district, on the right side here is commercial highway. Manchester Street is here, and Integra Drive is here.
Could I ask you a question?
Yep.
How does this differ from the variance that we were asked for and granted two years ago?
Zero.
Okay. So, why are we discussing it?
It expired.
It expired.
But I thought, didn't we just agree to extend it, or that was a different?
That was the one that I extended to make sure that this didn't happen. After two years, since we didn't construct it, we have to come back and get it...
Oh, so you didn't make it under the wire?
I apologize for not coming up earlier, I didn't know you were going to take testimony,
so, or comments.
Well, it's, now I understand.
Gotcha.
So, we are seeing the same case over again?
You are.
Okay.
So, we did approve this more than two years ago.
Agreed, yep.
Okay.
I didn't want to lean on that too heavy, just because I know it's all, every time, it's a new, new case, so I'm trying to be true.
It is, and it is.
You approved it in 2022.
Yep.
So, it expired in 2024.
Right. And I'm so much wiser now than I was in 2024.
Me, too. With that 2022 variance, the lot merger was actually a condition of approval. They went through that merger, obviously, and the variance has sent... They went through that merger, obviously, and the variance has since expired due to project development delays. One of the delays, the lengthy coordination with the car manufacturer and their licensing. I know Dennis can speak more to this if you'd like, but they are very particular about how the building looks, colors, interior, exterior, layout, all that stuff. So that was a lengthy delay and then just the project development overall. It's a lot of work to stuff a big dealership into a little lot, so that's where we're at. We're back here for the variance and we're hoping to get the project moving. We do have a site plan application submitted and should be heard in April due to the regional This site plan exhibit is preliminary. We are actually going for approval just for the rear portion of the lot in the April meeting. We're still waiting to finalize a couple items with the architectural side of things. And the way that we're planning to build it, I will say phased in air quotes because we're not phasing it. We are doing two separate approvals, but the idea is that we'll build the back parking lot. That'll give Dennis some room to put everything out back when they go to build the front and then embark on the addition and the improvements out front. Part of those improvements will be a stormwater management system. That is going to be wholly located out back with some underground detention, a little bit of above-ground infiltration. I won't get too deep into it just because it's a zoning board hearing, but we're going to get that constructed under Phase 1, so to speak, in the back here so that we can easily connect on Phase 2 or the addition out front. The existing subject parcel is 3.85 acres. Like I said, comprised of land in both the industrial and commercial highway districts. We are in the AP district due to Pembroke's wells, and that makes it a development of regional impact. Like I said, 9,500-square-foot metal building for service, 74 marked parking spaces plus some additional unmarked parking for display area similar to what's shown here, exists today, 30-foot curb cut, mainly pavement, the entire site, the entire Manchester Street parcel minus the detention pond, and then out back is a mix of gravel and vegetation. The proposed condition is 3.83 acres. There's going to be a slight lot line adjustment, permanent easement for the Manchester Street widening project. We've designed everything off of that, so setbacks and everything will correspond with the new lot line. Proposed condition also includes a 2,500-square-foot building, which it looks like 13,000 or 15,000 and change square foot addition to that 9,500-square-foot building. Like I said, the expansion will include stormwater improvements, improvements to the site's landscaping, lighting, and just general aesthetic and functional improvements to really spruce up the dealership, which Dennis is eagerly awaiting. We're going to add a access point to Integra Drive, so it'll be a through access either way. That'll help with deliveries, I'm sure, and just facilitate overall access and movement throughout the site better than what it is today. With that said, I can go into the five criteria or findings of fact to get us moving on the variance. Again, we are seeking a variance, a use variance for the sale or rental of motor vehicles other than construction equipment where such use is prohibited in the industrial district. I will mention too, it was determined by the previous board or in the previous meeting that permitting the sole use of motor vehicle sales negates needing a variance for all the criteria that come with that as far as inventory storage. Obviously, the performance and set performance criteria still apply, which we have got variances for later. Those are the ones that you extended here tonight. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the applicant's proposed use does not unduly or in marked degree conflict with the ordinance, allowing auto inventory to be parked adjacent to where auto sales are conducted. Does not violate the ordinance's basic zoning objectives, nor does it alter the essential character of the locality. We've all been up Manchester Street. We know what goes on up there. Use variance is requested in an area where automobile sales are the primary use of many properties, including two of the four abutters. Based on a condition of another approved variance, the one that you extended tonight, the only abutting property that does not share an automotive-type business, this is an office building here, there is a 10-foot vegetated buffer that is required. It's part of our site plan process, which has been implemented in the plans that were The lot merger was conditioned for the prior variance based on the feedback of the zoning board at the time. The merger took an underperforming lot on Integra Drive, which sat vacant for nearly 30 years. Split it between three abutters, this abutter, this abutter, and our applicant, all with planned improvements to transform that large portion of land into something that would benefit the public and the city with respect to public health, safety, and welfare. The proposed use within the AP overlay district carries numerous regulatory requirements, both through the city of Concord as well as the state of New Hampshire. The buildout of this project will put those regulatory processes in place in seeking permits and approvals. State of this proposed uses like the surrounding uses, and the expansion will require updates to the existing facility and their operational practices. These updates will require the facility to come into current standards. In turn, would safeguard the aquifer in regard to the AP district. On-site management of stormwater is a key topic with public health and safety due to storm events and nutrients found in the stormwater. The completely redesigned and redeveloped stormwater system that will be implemented for this project will, one, remove the burden from the municipal system. Currently, this might be overkill, but right now it all brings to a series of catch spaces right here. There's a six-inch orifice that kind of throttles the displacement out into the Manchester Street drainage system, and then it backs up into this detention pond that sits back here currently. With the proposed condition, all the stormwater will go to those infiltration basins that we're proposing in the back, essentially disconnecting this site from the municipal system. There is some Integra Drive drainage that we're going to utilize in the long term. There's a big detention pond built at the end of Integra Drive when they originally did the subdivision, so we're going to utilize some of that capacity in the proposed condition. But up to the 50-year storm event, we're capturing on-site and infiltrating the ground. Not only granting this variance, not only would granting the variance not alter the essential character of the area, granting the variance would allow one of Concord's longstanding businesses to expand, which brings expanded employment and other benefits businesses create. Number two, if the variance was granted, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because one substantial purpose of the ordinance is to encourage the most appropriate use of land and dissuade development which may contradict that purpose. Surrounded uses include multiple dealerships, automotive parts supply, a car wash, a bank, and an office building. Granting the variance would not alter the essential characteristics within that area, and we believe that it fits well within those uses. The provision of the AP overlay district will be honored as part of local and state permitting processes. Again, ensuring public safety aspect is not impacted by the project. We hope to improve the current conditions of the site, bring some improvements to functionality and aesthetics, as well as meeting those regulatory requirements. Number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because the loss to the applicant, if the variance is not granted, is very high. Without the variance, the dealership may not be able to continue at this location given the demands from the dealership's licensing agreement with the car manufacturer. There's a lot of storage inventory out there right now. It barely fits on the site. Dennis is very anxious to get the project moving and get it into a nice sightly and organized fashion, I'm sure, and that's what we're aiming to do with this, is to really clean up the site, provide storage that is, has the capacity, not only now, but in the On the other hand, the public stands nothing to gain if the variance is denied. Without the variance, the vacant condition of the Integra Drive parcel will likely continue, which is a disservice to the public, as noted, the use is consistent with the present uses within the area. If variances were granted, the values of surrounding properties would not be diminished because aside from the large lot at the end of Integra Drive, the former ten Integra Drive parcel is the last undeveloped lot on Integra Drive. It stands to reason that once developed, the parcel's fair market value and assessed values will increase, which in turn enhances, not diminishes, the values of surrounding properties, which are all commercial in nature. The proposed use is consistent with the abutting uses and fits exceedingly well within the vicinity. And then I'll read the hardship verbatim. Number five, unnecessary hardship. We went with A, owning to the following special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. No fair and substantial justice, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purpose of the ordinance, provisions, and the specific application of the provision to the property and the proposed use is a reasonable one. Let's take a second. The special conditions of this property that distinguish it from others are the merger and the conditional approval of the last variance with that merger. The existing parcel is a longstanding auto dealership, which is just across the CH boundary, the commercial highway boundary. Due to the acquisition and merger of the ten and Integra Drive parcel, the dealership was able to expand its land area based on the variance, allowing the sale of motor vehicle within the industrial district. Variance has since expired, and the applicant would like to regain approval to expand the dealership within the IAN district. The uniqueness of this lot is essentially that it's split zone. It's one single parcel and that's been here before to get the same variance, essentially do the same thing, just we didn't do it in a timely fashion. As noted, the general public purpose of this provision at issue are to prevent unsightly storage of unregistered vehicles to protect the aquifer. These general public purposes are fully satisfied with this proposed use. Orderly and sightly storage of automobile inventory will occur immediately adjacent to the existing auto sales and inventory storage. Auto service and repair will be regulated to protect groundwater based on regulatory requirements of the state and the city of Concord. Overall, the expansion and redevelopment of the site not affect the neighboring properties nor the zoning goals sought to be regulated by this ordinance. This makes the proposed use a reasonable one in our eyes for the reasons stated with respect to the other variance standards and those expressed in this section. The proposed use satisfies the legal requirements of the standard. In conclusion, use is a reasonable one, does not differ with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. Proposed use is not contrary to public interest, health, safety, or welfare due to planned improvements and their corresponding regulatory requirements and processes. Spirit is observed with reasonable use within an area where auto sales are the primary use of many abutting properties. And the only abutting property, which is not an automobile in nature, we have provided screening for, or we will provide screening for in the planning process. And the uniqueness is the split zone parcel of one single parcel, which conditional, the condition of the previous variance, which has since expired, was to merge a parcel. Applicant is looking to move forward with the project to meet demands of the dealership licensing agreement. Therefore, hardship presents itself if the applicant, this variance is not required. It's not... Wow.
But you repeat that.
Yeah.
No, no, that's okay. We got it. We do have a letter that dates back to the original case, which is from the town of Pembroke concerning the regional impact, specific request for the regional impact. At the time, I recall that meeting all of those requests was part of the conditions for approval. That's still the case?
I don't know if number four was just because we didn't want to leave it on the planning board to have to manage the test wells and their...
But the test well would happen.
It could, yes.
Okay.
As part of, we just, as part of the planning process to make it easier so that there could be some...
What would make it easier?
Essentially that we could put it on a plan and have the plan recorded versus just a variance approval.
Oh, I see what you mean. Yeah. In other words, yes, okay. But the request is being honored notwithstanding?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Other questions from the board?
So if I recall, do I have a straight, the Integra side of the merged lot, is that primarily going to be used to store inventory, not display? Like, are you going to be advertising cars on the Integra side? Okay.
No. All of our frontages on the Manchester side, you know what I mean? All the storage and employee parking would be in the back.
So it's just going to give you more room to store vehicles on site?
Yeah.
But, yeah, got it. And remind me, which dealership is this?
Subaru, Capital City Subaru.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, I should have mentioned that.
No, that's okay. I think you did somewhere along the line.
Sorry.
You did.
To double down on that, we are planting trees here just because of the large tree requirement, and there's not much room to place them elsewhere, so there will be some trees there, so they won't even be able to see them really from Integra Drive.
Other questions from the board? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in opposition to it? Any comments from code enforcement? With that, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing. We have a request to grant a use variance to allow the extension of a car dealership from its current lot on Manchester Street back through a lot that was merged with it onto Integra Drive. The board has previously reviewed this case and granted a variance. I'm going to start this one with Mr. Winters. What do you think? How do you see it?
Yeah, I, you know, looking at it fresh, obviously, we can't, you know, we can't simply restand what we did before, but I think that they're making good use of a previously undeveloped and non-performing lot, as they said, and as far as the public is concerned, it's going to have minimal impact because they're not putting cars out there to display to the public, which, you know, as people drive by, it could be distracting and that might improve the characteristic of the Integra Drive side of things. They're just using it to store vehicles, which seems reasonable, but their commercial operations is still going to be on the Manchester Street, which is obviously very much in character of that neighborhood.
Mr. Myhead, how do you see it?
Yeah, I agree. I think it's a proper use of the site, and I agree with Andrew's observations that the... that the, um, location of stored vehicles is an appropriate place to put it, doesn't cause any distraction.
Inspector Morgan?
I believe this is an appropriate use variance. Mr. Caron?
Mr. Waller?
Yes, I agree also.
Oh, I thought you were just saying, yeah, yeah, I'm here. Okay, I agree with my colleagues. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the variance from Section 28-41J, Table Principal Uses J1, to allow for the sale of or rental of motor vehicles other than construction equipment in tax map lot 783Z16, addressed as 150 Manchester Street, because all of their criteria under RSA 67433 have been met based on the record before us, and I move to adopt the applicant's proposed findings as the board's findings of fact.
Anyone care to second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous, the variance is granted, or in this case, reran it. That brings us to item 4.7. This is Teresa Canejo. Canejo, I apologize. On behalf of Teresa Canejo and Fred G. Loader Jr., requests approval for a variance from Section 28-52 duplex or two-family dwelling, to allow the conversion of an existing house and finished basement into a duplex on a lot with 8,712 square feet, where 15,000 square feet are required for a duplex, and 95.3 feet of frontage, where 120 feet is required for a duplex, and tax map lot 583Z66, which is addressed at 200 Rumford Street in the urban transitional UT District. This is not a development of regional impact. Ms. Canejo, do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but? Carry on, what would you like us to know?
So after about two years of aggressively looking to buy a house, I finally, after getting outbid so many times, I finally found this house. I work at Concord Hospital, and this was like the perfect situation. It already had a in-law apartment, and I thought, this is perfect, this, I can do something with this to help myself in these ever-changing and challenging worlds that we find ourselves in with some extra income, right, and also providing a home for somebody like me who finds himself alone, single income, that just doesn't stretch far enough. So I am seeking variance for a two-family to make it a legal apartment to rent out to possibly traveling nurses, Section 8, or just another individual like me, who needs help with this housing, you know, environment we're in. So, looking at the house, nobody would really know that it was already had an apartment downstairs. You can't see it from the street. In fact, I don't know how many of the neighbors actually know that it's even there unless they were in the house before. So I don't think there would be an impact to the neighborhood. I have the room for the driveway, I have a lot of, I think, the criteria to meet for that. So I'm hoping that you'll grant me this variance, so I can stay in Concord. Across from me is the Blossom Hill Cemetery, so I don't think they would mind.
Why not go for the, what stopped you from going for an accessory dwelling unit as opposed to the two-family?
That was the first choice. We tried that and found out that, I think because I'm in a urban transitional zone, that I don't qualify for that.
Can you speak on that?
I can. To qualify for a special, for any special exception, you have to be able to meet all of the requirements of the special exception. And there's one of the requirements of the special exception that this site doesn't meet.
Which one?
Uh, the size.
It has to be a conforming lot?
There, it's a, there's a minimum and a maximum, and she is below the minimum.
The unit.
For an accessory dwelling unit.
For the accessory dwelling, okay.
You mean the, the total size of the building or the apartment?
The accessory dwelling unit.
Because I think it's 600 feet.
750.
The maximum is 750.
The maximum.
The minimum, I believe, is 600, and, and the unit is below 600.
Oh, the unit itself, you mean the living unit?
That's a pretty tight margin.
They've got teeny homes now.
600, yeah, but I mean, it's a pretty...
Yeah.
Minimal differential between the minimum and the maximum.
It would be very hard to satisfy.
Yeah, yeah, no, right.
It shouldn't be a minimum, frankly, but there is, so.
750 square feet is roughly, just approximately, you know?
Five.
Yeah. It's about, about five, 540.
So this would be like a small one-bedroom or a studio?
Yes, it's already got the one-bedroom with the walk-in closet, and it has a huge kitchen, and a bathroom, shower.
So it's already laid, you would have to do minimal construction, it's all laid out?
Exactly.
And it has its own entrance?
Yes.
And parking, does it have?
Yes, plus it has like at least six cars in my driveway park, for parking.
Do you know how it was used before your fourth house?
As a in-law.
Oh, so they were just using it, and no one, no one was asking any questions?
Right, they're, I believe the prior owner's sister lived down there.
Oh, because it was relatives, so it was kind of off the books, yeah.
Real in-law.
Yeah, real in-law, right?
Betray my ignorance here, there, there is a minimum somewhere, I think in either the building code or housing code, for a size of a dwelling unit. Do we know what that is?
No, I don't, I don't think there is.
I think we dealt with every of those micro apartments.
Yeah.
So, I, the reason I asked that question is I was wondering if that's actually smaller than what they're saying the minimum of an ADU has to be.
Which would be odd, but...
It's possible.
Yeah, it's definitely possible, yeah.
Okay. Can you talk a little bit about hardship? Anything about the property, the house configuration that creates a hardship for you? This, that, I ask this question not because there's an obvious answer, but because we have to answer it in order to consider, consider the variance.
I live by myself, my husband died years ago, so I find myself alone, and with a one income, it's very hard to make it these days, especially now. Everybody's gone to the grocery stores, and it was what I'm talking about, and who knows where it's going to end up. So I need the extra income in order to be able to survive there.
But from a property point of view, it might be unique that the apartment basically already exists.
Exactly.
Right, if you were going to build from scratch, you could, you could meet the square foot requirement.
And when was, and when was your house built, do you know?
I think it's about 60 years old.
Early 70s.
Early 70s, okay.
I was going to say 1960s or 70s, probably in that neighborhood.
So that, that lot must have been subdivided before that.
I think I looked at least one other house on this block of Rumford is in the same position and is registered as two units, and it would be non-conforming.
Right.
Are there other houses on Rumford Street that are duplexes or...
I think there is a two-family, a little ways up.
Yeah.
There's a spattering through that whole area.
Right, there's, there was a, not a landscaping, a nursery. An accountant, there's various different things along that, and there's duplexes all around the whole area. I owned one on Walker Street years ago, so, yeah, there's a couple on there.
So the house you bought is constructed to inhabit this in-law apartment. It might be hardship for you to have to reconstruct the house and...
I don't know how I could.
Yeah.
That'd be a challenge.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
I can't think of right now.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, that's it.
Yep, that's it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who'd like? Thank you. Is there anyone here who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Please come forward. Good evening, Mr. Schweiger, do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Would you identify yourself for the record, please?
I am Roy Schweiger, and I think this is a very valuable thing. I would like to state for the record that twice in two different communities, I've rented an efficiency apartment of about 400 square feet, which is ideal for my circumstances at the time. So I think that if there really is something in the housing code that requires something to be bigger than that, that's unfairly increasing the size of the, necessary size of a unit, and therefore unnecessarily increasing the rent for that unit. So I think that maybe you should be able to give a variance on the minimum size of the unit, if that's the thing. The real reason I'm here tonight is, my recollection on reading through the documents is the one applicat, or two pages of the application. One is an application for an ADU, and one is an application for a duplex. And that seemed very strange to me, it seems like, you know, staff is being careless on this, and we need to...
I didn't see anything about ADU.
I, I thought there was two things, one is the list of handwritten stuff that comes in, and one is an application form.
Well, you may be right about what you saw, but what was submitted to us does not include anything about an ADU.
That's interesting. Anyway, so I thought that was a bit confusing, and the second thing is, I'm very sensitive about people talking about affordable housing. I mean, according to HUD, housing for people to make 90,000 a year can be affordable, and you know, that's not what I consider affordable. And on the one hand, you know, the applicant says she's going to rent it to Section 8 people, on the other hand, she's going to rent it to travelers who generally make like double a regular rate, so, you know, I don't know how that is, you know, relevant. And more particularly, I don't think there's any way in this property of enforcing that's affordable. So I think it's inappropriate for the staff comments on this to say it will be affordable housing, because the staff really has no way of knowing what this is going to be rented for. The idea that it's 400 square feet, you're probably not going to get a lot of money for it, but still, I think that the finding by the staff that this is affordable housing when there's no, you know, legal enforcement of that is a mistake, and the staff should not put that in their report.
I don't, I, I believe the appellate made the remark about Section 8, I don't think the staff said anything.
No, the appellate said Section 8, but if you read the staff report, it says this is affordable housing, and I don't think the staff should be making that fine.
Well, in any case, the board is free to ignore the staff. It's been known to happen.
I don't remember.
It does say.
It does say, okay. Okay, well, I, your point's well taken, but actually, whether it's affordable or not, doesn't bear on a, on a zoning decision.
Well, that's fine, and like I say, I'm in favor of this project.
Oh, here it is.
But I merely feel like, you know, there's some procedural issues on the fact part of the city, and not on the applicant, that maybe, you know, should be done differently next time.
I mean, it's 500 square feet, I, I, I think it's pretty fair to assume it's going to be relatively affordable compared to...
But I don't think the staff should be throwing that as a fine.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's, that's probably something you ought to address to either the planning director or the city manager. I mean, I'm not saying it's not true, but it's not something we need to deal with one way or the other. Anything else?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in favor of the appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Please come forward. Do you swear to tell the truth and think about the truth?
I do.
Would you identify yourself for the record, please?
Heidi Power.
What would you like us to know, Ms. Power?
Good evening. I live at 202 Rumford Street, right next to the property, and the first time I've heard about the duplex wanting to happen was when I got the certified letter. I've lived at 202 Rumford Street for almost 22 years, so I know, I have a pretty good understanding of what goes on, on our street. If you look in the picture there, one of the major concerns that we have for safety is parking and sightlines. And that street, that part of that street, people go whipping by, like whipping by. I don't know why, because they have to stop, the other thing, but that seems to be like a woo, let's just whip by there. So there is a, there's a real...
They're trying to get past Blossom Hill in a hurry.
I don't, I don't know. I don't know, but there is, there, there is, that is my major concern, is that, I didn't know there was an in-law apartment there, I was aware, I have been in that house with prior owners before. I do appreciate the need for extra income, I do appreciate the need for more housing in Concord, I do appreciate all of those things. I'm just not 100% sure that that is the place for that particular type of thing. The driveway that she has is a little bit larger, but if you stack a couple cars, the sightline is really tough for everybody on the, the same side of the, that road to back out of their driveways and to not get hit by the speeding cars. So there's, there's like a little bit of an issue with that. You can see that some people park on the street closer to, is that 196? You can see that people do that, that also is part of the sightline problem, but because it's further back from our property, we try to, we have a little bit more time when we back out of our property. You look at the cars across the street, that, that has had official, what's it called? People have come officially to deal with that, that we've had a meeting in town, in the city for parking issues, or as my son lovingly calls parking mors, that, so there's, there is, like, if anybody has a visitor that goes there, that, where are they going to park? So I'm, I'm a little bit leery about that, and while I can appreciate the, you know, the current owner needing that and needing, people needing a place to live, she might not be the owner always, and so we're thinking sort of long-term, that if it becomes a duplex, we'll always stay a duplex, and then do we have people who, you know, change who they want parking, who they don't want parking? We have, as far as I know, one duplex in that area, not talking about Waverly, but there's right to the other side of 202 Rumford Street, there's a two-family. And fortunately, or unfortunately, as that has produced the parking issues, is having an extra, you know, place there. But that's an existing duplex, we try to be neighborly and we work with it, and...
The, there was testimony that they have, she has enough parking on the property for her tenants.
Correct.
If she were to have tenants.
It depends on how many people, how many cars. I know she said that there's six, six would be really...
Six?
That's what I think she just said.
Well, there's a 600 square foot apartment.
Six spaces.
Six spaces for both above and below, but I think that that would be really pushing the limit. I would think, I think three is tough to push the limit, like with...
Under the ordinance, she wouldn't be required to have more than four, I believe.
Right, right, yeah, so...
And if she has six, she's covered.
Correct.
And she hasn't sought a variant, so she would need at least four, or she'd have to come back.
Yeah, so...
So one of my questions is, like, not knowing a lot about this, because I've just kind of got into this for this particular thing, is that when you create a variance for, if it was 15,000 feet that's needed for a duplex, and then you have someone asking for a spot, I can't remember if it was 9,000 or something like that, my, I, I don't know enough about that, that it's not asking just for like 50 feet, it's not asking for, I don't know... I don't know why the 15,000 is a variant, is, is what is in, what is the reason behind that, the 15,000?
It, it had to do, when the original master plan was drawn up and the, and the ordinance was drawn up, the people who drew it up were, wanted to have a certain level of density, maximum level of density in that neighborhood. It, that neighborhood, the construction in it and the subdivisions in it, I think probably long predate in most cases the.
Correct.
But the, the concept is, is to, to attempt to manage the density. And to the extent that that way of managing it creates hardship for people as defined by the zoning ordinance, that's how they wind up here, if they want to.
Right.
Want to, want to do something. That's where that number comes from. I don't, it's not magic, but it's, it's what the.
Right.
The city planners and the people who drew the ordinance wanted and what the city council voted on.
Yeah. So, I, I think that safety on that particular road, just knowing the behavior of that road, or the people on the road, the behavior of people on that road, parking, if anybody just parks a little bit off the side there, I don't know. It just, it's, it's been an issue already without adding more people to the equation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Any comments from code enforcement?
No.
Ms. Canejo, would you like to offer factual clarification in response to anything you've heard?
Well, I haven't seen any.
Come on up so we'll get you on tape. And on camera.
So, having lived there since November, not a long time, but I haven't had any trouble getting in and out of that driveway. And she apparently has had no trouble getting in and out of her driveway. We do it. It's wait for cars to go by and then we pull out. I mean, it's driving in the city. So, I just don't think there would be an impact. I don't see that there would be an impact in the neighborhood, which talking a one-bedroom, you know, it's not going to be 15 people, not a rooming house. It's one thing. So.
Did you have a question?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Comments from code enforcement?
Nope.
With that, we'll declare, did I already ask you that? I'm really good at this. It just keeps doing it over and over.
Take a break next month.
I think so. I'm going to go to California. With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed and I will invite discussion from the board, starting with Mr. Monahan.
Yeah, I agree that with the applicant that this is not going to put a lot of burden on the neighborhood of the piece of property. I think that given the size of the unit, I'm not concerned about parking issues. And I just want to make an observation that I do agree with the, with the staff's note here that the proposal would comply with the housing components of the city's master plan while providing an option for affordable housing. It doesn't deem it to be affordable.
And it's not a finding.
An observation.
It's not a finding.
Okay.
Oh.
Did I say finding?
No.
No. Okay. Yeah.
Well, okay. Mr. Waller, how do you see it?
I think it's reasonable use. I think duplexes are allowed in the neighborhood. I think lot sizes tend to be smaller than would be the criteria for here. So, I think denying it would be denying the applicant reasonable use of her property.
Ms. Inspector Morgan?
I agree.
Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I mean, it occurs to me as the neighbor was talking that it might be the reason people tend to go fast on this stretch of Rumford is that almost the entirety of Rumford is very close-together streets in like a grid where you really can't go very fast. There's a lot of stop signs and then this one stretch.
It's also stupidly wide.
Yeah, there's no cross-street. So, I think the neighbor, you know, the neighbor has a valid point that I can see that, and it's also tight. There's no street parking or, it's not very good street parking, but I don't think the applicant should, you know, should bear the responsibility for the fact that people, you know, drive too fast and don't park very well. I mean, I, I think that's an enforcement issue that, you know, all the neighbors should, should be, continue to, you know, speak to the city about getting out there to ticket or tow vehicles. So, but otherwise, I agree.
I agree with my colleagues. Would anyone care to make a motion? Oh, well, let me say beforehand, I think we've seen in many situations where the ordinance is overlaid on what I suspect was a pre-existing subdivision, even if the house wasn't there, often create situations that are just not fair to the people who are living there if the ordinance is literally applied, which is why we get the big bucks for, for deciding whether or not it will be literally applied.
That's a really weirdly shaped lot, like something weird happened there.
Yeah.
Sounds like the Twilight Zone.
They used to be a through street. They filled it in so they could throw a house.
Is that what happened?
Oh.
Oh.
Turn that access behind it.
Yeah, because look at the 15.
Yeah.
I, I share the fence line on Waverly Street Side.
Ah.
You're the weird one?
Because part of my yard used to be the public park. The public park was when they filled in the hill.
Ah, okay. Got it. Anyhow, would anyone care to make a motion?
I make a motion to grant the variance from Section 28-5-2 duplex or two-family dwelling to allow the minimum frontage to be less than one and one-half times the minimum frontage specified in Section 28-4-1H and to allow the minimum lot size to be less than one and one-half times the minimum lot size specified in Section 28-4-1H, a tax map lot. 583Z66 addressed as 200 Rumford Street because all of their criteria under RSA 67433 have been met based on the record before and I move to adopt the applicant's proposed findings as the board's findings of fact.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Did you do that all in one breath?
Yeah, one second.
She's a genius for.
Are they FedEx commercials?
Yeah.
How am I going to do that?
Yes, okay. So, it's been moved, was it seconded? Yes. Mr. Waller seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The variance is granted. And that brings us to.
A move to approve the January 29th and February 5th minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? The minutes are approved. Anything else, Boris?
Yes.
Just the revised, updated rules by laws, whatever they're called.
Is there anything in there that you'd like to call our attention to?
Not really. I, I just went through them and updated the, well, the language for, because it referenced code administrator, which is no longer valid. I think there was one thing that said chair man and I'm particular to that, so I, I made it all chair. There, there was a section in there for special acceptance and variance, which I removed because that's all stated in the ordinance, the zoning ordinance and the zoning ordinance holds. And it was conflicting.
I was sliding it to the end for recycling.
So, just.
Housekeeping.
Cleaned it up. Yep.
Okay.
A move that they get approved. A move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. Is that it for this evening?
That's it.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I didn't think so.